So you'll tell me when we're live?
We're ready to begin.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody, to the Washington Elementary School District Governing Board Meeting for January 28, 1921, I'm sorry, 2021, forgive me. And with that, Ms. Tucker, would you be kind enough to do a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you. Governing Board members present, Governing Board President, Mr. Bill Adams, Governing Board Vice President, Ms. Nikki Whaley, Governing Board members, Mr. Larry Herrera, Ms. Lindsay Peterson, and Ms. Jenny Abbott Beardi.
Thank you. And we're about to go into a moment of silence and meditation. I would ask that anybody out there that is spiritual, if you would, take a moment. I know that we have a lot of families that are hurting and we've lost loved ones. We have a fellow, we have an ex-Governing Board member, Mr. Dave Braswell, that's going through some difficult times. If those of you that are spiritual, would take a moment and give a prayer. Everybody else, if you would, just a moment of silence for all those that are hurting out there within our district. Thank you. And Mr. Herrera, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. And now, may I please have a motion for the adoption of the January 28, 2021 Regular and Executive Session Meeting?
So moved, Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Ms. Whaley. May I have a second, please?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Herrera. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. And now, may I have a motion for the approval of the January 14, 2021 Governing Board minutes, please?
So moved, President Adams.
Thank you, Ms. Whaley. May I have a second, please?
I second.
Thank you. And who, and I'm sorry, who was that?
Jenny Abbott Beardi.
Thank you. If you'd all be kind enough that when you make a motion, if you just turn on your screen so I can see you. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And current events and acknowledgements, Governing Board and superintendent, Governing Board members?
President Adams, I'd like to make an acknowledgement. This is Ms. Whaley.
Thank you.
I just want to acknowledge just everyone. We're, you know, coming up on a year, you know, not quite, but of working through this pandemic. And we've come a long way. I know that our students, our staff, our families have all adapted and are doing the best that they can. And, you know, through all of this, you know, some, it's not working for some people or it's not working as well as maybe in person. But I can say from my perspective, I'm just really happy with how well the teachers have engaged the learners in my household, both here with Glendale Union, and then also the friends that I'm seeing and people posting on Facebook that they are, kids are resilient and many of them are still doing quite well. And I think that has a lot to do with the quality of our teachers and our teachers reaching out. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of them.
Thank you, Ms. Whaley. That was wonderful. And the other board members?
President Adams, this is Lindsay Peterson. I'd like to just make a quick acknowledgement.
Please.
I just wanted to acknowledge the work and effort that went into our kindergarten roundups that happened this week. It was just, you know, so I've been constantly amazed at the way that our district and teachers and administration has been able to work together to make these events that families look forward to still happen in ways that are memorable and meaningful. Lots of pictures on social media from friends and family who took their kids to get introduced to their school and to get excited about being a part of the WSD family. So I was just super excited to see those and to have people tell me how great those events were for their families.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other board members? Okay. In that case, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna also piggyback. First of all, I want to just say thank you, Ms. Whaley, for acknowledging all the teachers and all the parents and the work they're doing. I agree with you wholeheartedly. It's amazing what they're doing out there. And then also, I'm gonna piggyback on the drive-up, the Kinder Roundup. That was, I had the great fortune to go out to Sunburst Parking Lot and to walk around and say hello, just waved from a social distance. It was a great event. And I just, again, want to say thank you to everyone that was out there. It was freezing. I want to thank Principal Jennifer Dial and her team. They just did such a beautiful job. It was wonderful to see the stations that were set up and as the cars were passing by with the parents and the children. It was consistently busy the whole time I was there. A big thank you to those sponsors that were there and supported the Sunburst. In fact, all of our campuses, the Kinder Roundup. A big thank you to our staff that was there. They continue to be amazing. Deb Lepuka, hopefully I'm pronouncing your last name properly. It was wonderful seeing you and meeting your mom. Seeing the children and parents react the way they did at each station was fantastic. And again, thank you to all, for all of our staff and all those sponsors for everything they do for our community. And lastly, it was just great being on a campus. It was just wonderful to see everybody. And with that, Dr. Stanton, I think you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, members of the board, members of the audience. It has been a very busy time, and thank you for the board and your support. I will say, in the lead-up to the kindergarten roundup, there was the kindergarten roundup Facebook Live. And I'd like to thank Pam and Julie and Ashante and Jessica, who did a great Facebook Live. We are finding multiple ways to communicate with our parents and let them know what's going on. And those guys did a great session. And I want to give a big shout-out to Julie, the moderator. She did a great job. Thank you. Also, I do want to give a shout-out to Lydia, Justin, all of our admin and staff. We had a virtual teacher fair. It is time to start hiring, as we always do. And so, we're working on our virtual teacher fair. And so, a big shout-out to that team. I know that wasn't easy to do, but we keep adapting and modifying during all this time. I do also want to thank the planning team for kindergarten roundup, all the school staffs and all the staff that, as you said, Mr. Adams, were out there in the cold. It was chilly, but it was fun. We had such a good time. I got to about six to seven of our schools, and it was great. And then finally, I want to thank Ms. Beardi, she, Abbott Beardi, she was actually able to attend our Title VI. And I want to thank Carrie, Lori D., Harold from R E M., and Jamie from Sunny Slope. Our Native American meeting was wonderful. Carrie showed many things, upcoming dates, data. And thank you, Ms. Abbott Beardi, for just asking great questions. It was wonderful. So, a great meeting with our Native American families, and so appreciate the work of that team as well. Thank you, Mr. Adams, for the opportunity.
Thank you. And so now, we'll go on to Agenda Item G. Is there any public participation, Ms. Tucker?
No, President Adams, we did not receive any requests for public participation.
Thank you, ma'am. So now, we're on to approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, please? Or does anybody wish to pull anything?
So moved.
And no one wishes to pull anything? I'm sorry, Nikki, it looks like your sound's off?
Yeah, sorry. I do wish to pull a couple items from consent agenda. I would like to pull Item D. and Item E., please.
With that, Mr. Herrera, you have a motion. Is there a second? Do you accept the, let's go ahead and move forward. Do I have a second on the motion, please?
I second it.
Thank you. So what we'll do is, and this motion is to approve A., B., C., F., G., and H.
An aye.
Forgive me? I didn't, okay, I didn't hear that. And aye. I'm sorry, I'm looking at an old agenda, and I can't see the whole, and Ms. Tucker, I can't see the whole agenda on your screen. So forgive me, I don't, I don't see an aye. Sorry.
The bottom. There you go.
Thank you. Thank you. So with that being said, may we have a, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. And so, Ms. Whaley, do you want to make a motion for D.?
I'd like to have a discussion before I make a motion, if I may.
Sure. And this is on the adoption of the January 28, 2021 Regular and Executive Session Meeting Agenda. Please go ahead, Ms. Whaley.
This is for the proposed student start and end date holiday calendar 21, 22, and 22, 23. That's what I have as Item D.
Okay. Ms. Whaley, I'm sorry. Ms. Tucker, can you move the screen up? I don't see, I can't see D. on your screen. And everybody, I apologize again. I'm going off of our website, so I'm using the agenda there. Ms. Tucker, can you move the agenda up?
It's like if you're making attempts and it's frozen, you may have to undo it and reshare it.
Thank you very much. So, and thank you, Ms. Whaley, for the correction. And everybody, if you see something different than I do, please chime in and make the correction, okay? So Ms. Whaley, you have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, President Adams, fellow board members, administration. The reason why I wanted to pull this item is because this is our calendar. This represents our holidays that we acknowledge in the district. And I understand that this is not all the days off that we have in the district. I did have a chance to speak to Ms. Mora ahead of the meeting, and I understand that IBM is still considering a couple other days where those would fall on the calendar. So I do recognize that this is not a complete agenda, but I wanted to have a discussion because this is approved holidays. I thought it was important to acknowledge two holidays that we have not added to this calendar. The first of which is Indigenous Peoples' Day, Columbus Day, is usually falls during our, has in the last few years fallen on our fall break. However, I think it's important to acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Day in our community as a day of celebration, especially for our Native American students and families. So I would like to see the addition of that. I know that we haven't taken quote-unquote Columbus Day off, but it is a state holiday. It is a day off that we would take if it didn't already fall on fall break. So I'd just like to amend it to say Fall Break slash Indigenous Peoples' Day with a parentheses of the date of the actual holiday. That is one recommended change that I would like to make. Secondarily, I do know, and maybe Ms. Mora can clarify what impact this would have, but the city of Phoenix and Arizona acknowledge Caesar Chavez Day, which is March 31st. And when that holiday falls on a weekend, they celebrate it the following Monday. And so, I would like us to consider adding Caesar Chavez Day as an acknowledged holiday. I would prefer it to be a holiday that we do take off. And I do, like I said, like to hear from Ms. Mora in terms of how that would impact. My understanding is it wouldn't impact our start and end dates because, as I said before, they're still trying to decide on additional days off that were already calendared, just not specified. So I would like to talk about both those two additions.
Ms. Whaley, maybe Mr. Wang with the cost, if that's what you're asking, or impact, so.
Not the cost, just whether or not it would extend our calendar. My understanding is there's holidays that have yet to be, that are going to be taken off. They're just kind of floating right now, and I'd like it to land on Caesar Chavez.
I'm not on the calendar committee, but speaking from IBM, because the calendar committee did make a recommendation of adding, or at least considering adding a day toward the end of April, because there's a large break between spring break and the last day of school. And we have data that supports that we have a lot of attendance issues approaching that time. There is going to be a cost to do that. That's why it's been not confirmed yet, because IBM is still in progress. But the minimum cost is $120,000. And that is assuming that we make the day before winter break a student day, where teachers are already working, but a lot of our classified staff are not working and they don't get paid for that Friday before winter break, such as parent professionals or crossing guards. Other than that, unless we replace something that's already on this list in front of you, if we add a day, a holiday, we would need to have that 180-student day before or after school in which we're extending multiple work calendars, including teachers, and that is a cost of about $700,000.
So it would not be able to be added to, I just want to make sure I understand. My understanding is that it could either take the place of one of these days, as you just stated, or IBM's already talking about potentially adding a day.
I mean, that's what the calendar committee brought to IBM, because there's a cost associated to that, of considering adding a holiday. I think it's the last Friday of April, just because of that long, there's nothing between spring break and May 23rd or 25th, whatever the last day of school is. So that was just a suggestion, but they recognized that there's a cost to it, and this year may not be the right year to consider adding, you know, adding such holiday. You could, or they could consider replacing not the mandatory ones, but some things that may not be mandatory. There's still going to be a cost, but it won't impact the first and last day of school. So like, you could say, hey, on fall break, October 11th on Monday is a school day, and the rest of the week is off. And then that, that day would then be transferred to some other, you know, you can leverage that day somewhere else where you're not impacting the start and end date. There's still going to be a cost to it, but I think the key component is the minimum cost is that day before winter break, when most of our staff, it is a working day despite not being a student day, but not for all. That's why that $120,000 price tag. Other than that, it's going to be a lot more expensive, as far as cost.
And in terms of just adding it to the holiday as unobserved, meaning we acknowledge it is a holiday on our calendar, but that is a school day, that's a possibility as well, until they could maybe discuss the payment portion of making it a paid holiday. We could temporarily just add it to the calendar as an unpaid day off, a non-day off, unpaid, just acknowledging the day.
Yeah. The Governing Board wants to recognize holidays, and it's still a school day, you know, standard workday, student day, or whatever. You know, I'm assuming that's entirely, you know, up to the Governing Board. There's no extra cost to that. It's just, it's just even the one that's going to IBM, that one's been kind of put on hold because, because of what may be or may not be any resources that we have. Is that our, is that our priority at the time? And so, even that one's being put on kind of like, in a tickle file, for lack of better terms, and so.
Yeah, no, I completely understand it'd be, it's a tough, it's going to be a tough budget year. So, yeah, I'd love to hear what other people think about that, but I still would very much, I think that we celebrate, our celebrations are an indication of what we value. And I think we have a day where we can acknowledge other students and other important things, but I think adding Indigenous Peoples' Day and Caesar Chavez Day, even if it's not a additional day off, but a day that the district recognizes, I think that that would be important for our communities to see that we value those holidays. And I will say that they are holidays of the city of Phoenix, and we are within the city as well, the majority of our district. I'm not sure if it's recognized in the city of Glendale. And then the state legislators acknowledge it as a day, but not a day off, is my understanding.
Okay. Are there any other fellow board members that'd like to chime in?
Mr. President, this is Jenny Abbott Beardi. And I agree with Ms. Whaley. I think it's a great idea to at least get those on the calendar as something for now, and then figure out, like, for the Caesar Chavez Day to, you know, figure out how to pay for it. Maybe this year isn't the best way, but to look into that and then add that for next. I think it's a great idea to do, I think it's long overdue. And then also, Columbus Day, I have a question. What is the actual date of that? It's October what? Or Indigenous People's Day? I'm sorry.
It's usually that, that second Monday. It's usually the 11th or 12th, I believe.
Is it not a, is it not like Veterans Day? Is it not a certain day?
It's not a mandatory day.
No, I'm sorry. It's a date. It's an actual, you know, just, I was just curious, because it seems like that always falls in fall break then? Is that correct?
Usually.
Just out of curiosity. Okay. And so, what you're asking, Ms. Whaley, is to then acknowledge that, like, within fall break in parentheses, the date and Indigenous People's Day as well? Okay. I think those are great ideas.
Mr. Adams?
I'm sorry, is that?
Dr. Stanton, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Just to double-check, Justin, these are the paid holidays, other than the first day of school, last day of school, because they fall in there, but the rest of those days are actually the paid holidays. Is that not correct?
Not quite. All but one fall break technically is not a paid day for teachers, for example. Years ago, and I don't want to guess how long ago, maybe 10, 12 years ago, when the district added a fall break, they basically took those five student days, those five workdays, and extended the school year. Fall break's kind of like a long weekend, you know, for lack of better terms. And so, if a teacher's making $50,000, they're still making $50,000 next year. There was no loss of income. There's no extra workdays added. There was just an insert, like, of a long weekend, pretend, that occurred with fall break. So, so if you were to, like, leverage one of those days for another, move that day or two days to another part on the calendar, if you're going to make it paid, it would have an extra cost. If you were going to make it unpaid, you could do that without having that extra cost. It would just mean that you're flipping the work and school days with a couple days in the middle of, you're shorting the fall break, basically, and making it school days.
So what, to Mrs. Whaley's discussion on Indigenous and Caesar Chavez Day, this is actually just the days we're trying to get the start and end date, and then, for the most part, the paid holidays. But then, there is actually a calendar that we have that has, that has our other days where they acknowledge. If it ends up the board ended choosing to acknowledge it, it would show up on a different calendar. Is that correct?
Yeah. I mean, this, the visual on this one is more about families and staff, well, in this part, student dates, and families knowing when their students are not in attendance, or making arrangements, whether it's vacation or whatnot. It's more directed on time off for the student calendar, not necessarily observing certain dates or.
So, Mr. Wang, I just want to make clear for, so this is actually for the students to know, like you just said, for planning purposes, for those types of breaks and things. And then, if the board members wanted to acknowledge, again, these two other days, that that would show up. I'm going to guess on our, you know, there are other kind of district calendar-type things, and that would be published? And I don't know if you can answer that, Mr. Wang?
I thought you were saying Whaley. I'm sorry. What was the question?
No. So what you, like you said, is I just want to be clear for our new board members and then our seasoned board members. This is kind of for the students. Right now, what's in front of us on the screen, for example, is kind of for our students to know, start and end dates, and then, for the most part, the days that they have off. And then, we have another calendar where we might be able to put those acknowledgements, if that's what the board chooses to do. Is that right?
I mean, you can put it in multiple places, but I think, like, Read Across America Day, I mean, I know it's not, you're not, it's apples and oranges, you know, doesn't make it wrong, but sometimes those are, like, inserted in the handbook or whatnot. You know, Teacher Appreciation Week, Bus Driver Day, you know, things like that. But it can be on multiple documents. I just know the tradition is this is more, or this was intended to show families what days are off for students.
Thank you. And Ms. Peterson, you're up next.
Thank you, President Adams. I think Dr. Stanton really covered my question. I just wanted to clarify exactly what this document will be used for and where it will be seen, because it does look to me like a list of, hey, your kid doesn't have school these days, which is important for parents to understand. And so, while I recognize honoring Caesar Chavez is extremely important to our community, it may not be on this list. So I just wanted to clarify that a little bit. I think mostly we did. I also wanted to say that Indigenous Peoples' Day is October 12th, and I know that because it's my little sister's birthday, but it always falls on the Monday before, whenever October 12th is. So that's how it's.
Thank you. Mr. Herrera, you have anything? Okay.
Mr. Adams, if I can just ask.
Yeah, I have something. Go ahead, Mr. Adams.
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Herrera, please.
So I guess the question is, we want to add a day to the, to the calendar, to the school calendar, or take away a day, I guess, is what I'm hearing. I think this was, this was discussed, I think, in the previous years regarding one of the, one of the days, especially Columbus, or switch Columbus for Caesar Chavez Day, which is what the city of Phoenix did back in 2008, which is why they have that. And I think, I think all tax-collecting organizations, especially municipalities and the state of Arizona have that. But I think some celebrate, some, I think everybody celebrates it. I just don't think it's a paid for some municipalities. Although I think it's a great idea, I think that the cost and the impact to the district should really be looked at further. And then, as it relates to this calendar, this agenda item, I'm not sure, you know, if any discussion's going to, you know, change this, because this has already been recommended, but, you know, I think that's definitely a topic for the IBM group, and then also for a future agenda item that's definitely warrants that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Whaley, did you have, I'm going to, I have a statement also, but Ms. Whaley, did you have something?
Oh, I just had a quick question. Why does it say observe next to Veterans Day? Aren't they all observed holidays? I just was trying to figure out why that one says observe.
Dr. Stanton, Mr. Wang?
Does anybody know on the calendar committee, why is it, is it always for the calendar folks, November 11th? I apologize, I don't know if it's always that day or if it.
Yes, it is always that day, so.
I didn't put the document together, so I'm not aware.
It's Thursday this next year and a Friday the following year, so it would, it's not a weekend.
So the reason why I asked that question is because, and I'll, Mr. Adams, I'll go ahead. Mr. Adams, if you want to go first, I can finish up after you.
Thank you. You know, I love the direction that you're taking, Ms. Whaley. You know, where we're landing is, we're going to acknowledge and observe, we're going to acknowledge these holidays in the calendar. We're not going to, you know, we're not going to have a day off with these, so, I mean, I'm fine with that. I believe that we also acknowledge some religious holidays that are on the, that are on our calendar. Mr. Wang or Dr. Stanton, do you recall?
We don't have any.
We do not.
There's no correlation with the holidays and any religious days. Sometimes it's coincidence on certain years or whatever, but nothing targeted.
Okay. Well, I still, I still do not have a problem with acknowledging these holidays, you know, to put it in our calendars so that the community knows that we at least know that they're there. As far as investment, as far as the investment side of it, it's difficult this year to do anything like that. Also, we, it's just a bad year to try to add any additional days off. Right now, we're trying to get children back into the school, so the optics may not be what one would wish, but I truly support what Ms. Whaley's saying in regards to acknowledging these on our calendar. Ms. Whaley, you're up.
Yes. So what I just wanted to point out is it doesn't say on here days off. It says start and end date and holidays. And I know the impression, or traditionally, it'd be days that we have off. But then, I think we could do what we have here with Veterans Day, which is observed. So some of these days, we won't actually have off. They won't be observed. Otherwise, it makes no sense for veterans today to say observed. But my understanding is we, these are holidays that we take off, and we could notate on here that these are holidays that are holidays that are acknowledged by the city and by the state, but that we do not absorb them with a day off, but we do recognize them as holidays. And I think that that would be helpful, because there are some people who do believe they get Caesar Chavez Day off. So if we'd list it on our dates of holidays, but put a parenthesis next to it that says no day off or not observed, or whatever language you want to put there, I'd say something more like school in session, so that we're not saying we don't observe it. But for me, that's not what this was, so that's. So, that's why I thought it would be good to add it here, because these are all the other state holidays, um, as well. Um, but I understand if that's not where everybody else wants to go. I would probably just say, where's the other calendar and where is that acknowledged, um, for a future agenda item? But I don't think it would hurt anything to add on here dates, um, and then say that it's not a, a work day, but, um...
Thank you. Ms. Whaley, would you, so would you make a motion, please? And what, what I perceive doing is we accept the calendar as presented, uh, with the addition of the two holidays you mentioned as observed. And we all know that this is fluid and that, again, you can come back to us with requests to make, uh, changes.
Mr. Adams, if I could?
Please.
I think there is a, Ms. Whaley is on to something, and Ms. Horton put it over in the chat, and Ms. Moore also, uh, if Veterans' Day falls on a weekend, then it's celebrated on, I believe, the Friday or Monday. And I think Pam also wrote it on the Friday before. And so that could be why that's observed, because we probably have kept this ca, calendar for quite a while. So, maybe, that is Veterans' Day. She's correct. We're actually celebrating Veterans' Day on that. I believe November 11th, it would be a, a Thursday, or maybe it might be a Wednesday coming up. Uh, so she has a point there. Normally, if it falls on a weekend, then I, I believe it's the Friday before. So, if it fell on a Saturday, we'd say Veterans' Day was observed on the Friday. So, I think our mistake here was that may be why that is that way, Ms. Whaley. So, I'm looking ahead, for example, you know, November 2021, November 11, 2021 is actually Veterans' Day. So, the word observed is, is mismarked there, I would say. Whereas if it ended up on a Saturday, it would end up on the Friday before. So, she, I think she has a point there. And then to your point, Ms. Whaley, I think we could probably put other holidays that we're going to acknowledge, as you said, um, and we could keep track of, you know, or keep them on a, uh, posted, um, calendar, shall we say. Uh, but like, like, uh, this, uh, what Lindsay had said earlier, excuse me, um, was the idea that this is for students to be aware of. That was originally why we would, we kind of bring it, Mr. Adams. So, that's why I just want to make sure it's clear. We, we do need to take the word observed off, I believe. That, that I think is a, a mismark on there, unless it's on a weekend, so.
When do you need this approved? Dr. Stanton, when do you need this approved by?
Uh, Mr. Wing and, uh, anybody else in the BLT? I mean, I think we want to adjust these to get them so that students would know the start and end dates and then the, as was stated earlier, the time off they would have for next year. Uh, when is the timeframe we need that by?
Well, there's no, there's just domino effects by not having it. And the other part too, and I, I, I agree. I think the observed was meant for a couple of years ago when it fell on a weekend and we observed it on a Friday or whatnot, and some, we just never took it off. What's lost there, what you don't see on here is usually that visual of the actual every month calendar, and you'll see the blackout dates to kind of refer back. And this would be the footer below of why it's not a student day or a work day. The key part here is the start and end time, because that's going to drive, like IBN, our interest-based negotiation team is re, considering that, or at least tabling for a little bit that, uh, that option from the calendar committee. That's going to impact the visual, if, if we do recommend in the governing board were to approve it, it's going to, it's going to change that visual. But the start and end time, the ending dates, if we don't change that, if we commit to that, we can then work on employee work calendars, so when our employees know when they start work next year. It can drive, uh, pay plans for when teachers get contracts, when their first paycheck is and all that kind of stuff. So, everything kind of, there's a trickle-down effect. So, I think the reason why it was brought to you now before the IBN consideration of the calendar committee was because of that start and end time. And we already knew some, you know, the required holidays that are mandatory, the lining of fall break with Glendale Union, you know, things that we typically do. So, uh, this was like more of the foundation, and then IBN, as part of its recommendations, will either break forward that recommendation from the calendar committee or recommend that we do not consider it this year or something like that.
So, so board, I, I think we're going to land right back where we started, that for this particular meeting, it's basically to approve these dates. We're not going to be able to, I don't believe that we're going to, unless somebody's going to make a motion to, um, add additional days off. Um, I think we're going to land right back to approve the presented, um, agenda item. Um, Ms., I'm sorry, Nick, I think you had your hand up first for-
I'll let Ms. Peterson go first.
Thank you. Peterson?
Uh, I had another question, just not even related to the holidays question. But I noticed that on the calendar that's up, um, on the website right now, it lists that teacher workday, the where no students would be in, like December 18th, um, this year was when the teacher workday is. But that's not on this calendar. Um, so I guess, again, I'm just wondering, where does this calendar land? And is, is that teacher workday part of this list of things?
This is the student calendar. If it was approved by the governing board, if then, then the, you'll, you'll receive the employee calendars probably next board meeting.
Okay.
Because it drives all of that. That's why I think it was presented to you guys now versus waiting until IBN session done, is done, the negotiation session, because it drives so many things. And if IBN's not considering, and the calendar committee didn't, didn't consider extending the start or end time of the calendar, we can at least move forward on many things while that's still pending.
So, this is the calendar of important dates for students in the district.
As presented tonight, yes.
Thank you. Lindsay? I mean, Nikki?
Yes, so that's why, because the other calendar that we've seen has a bunch of half-days. It's the testing schedule. It's the workdays. It doesn't have anything to do with holidays. And so I feel like this is the opportunity, if we want to acknowledge those holidays, that this is where that would be. And so I will make a motion that we include, um, an asterisk through fall break that indicates when Indigenous Peoples' Day is. And we add the Caesar Chavez holiday, indicating that both of those are still class, uh, regular school days, um, so that it is acknowledged as a holiday, but that it is not an additional day off.
I second that.
Any discussion? Okay, here we none. We have a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay, here we no nays.
Nay, nay.
There is a nay. Two nays. Um... All right, board, I'm conflicted. I'm going to vote. I'll vote aye on this one. See where it lands. Thank you. So, motion passes. And again, it's a clear understanding, just so I understand, that there'll be, there'll be, that there'll be, um, notation that this is not a day off. Correct. That we're just acknowledging it.
Correct.
Okay, motion passes. Let's move on to action item number E. Ms. Whaley?
Thank you. Um, I just thought it would be a, a good process. I wanted to, to talk with, um, either Ms. McKeever or Lori about the process by which we selected the 21st century. Um, what sites would be getting that grant, or which would we had applied for?
I'm here, Kathleen McKeever. Good evening, governing board members, uh, President Bill Adams, Dr. Stanton and guests. And Kathleen, the Director, Kathleen McKeever, Director of Academic Support Programs. So, I'm part of the team that helps to put together, um, this grant application each year. So, I'm here to answer questions.
Nikki?
Thank you. So, um, we landed on five schools, and I just wanted to, uh, my understanding is that we originally applied for 10. Is that correct?
Uh, well, each year that we have the grant cycle, the state determines how many we can, um, pursue. And in this particular year, we can only write for five. There was a time in the district where we could write for 10. And then they moved to six, and then this, in this particular cycle, it's down to five.
And how did we land on these five out of the 32 schools?
Well, we always work, uh, together, um, to take a look at our sites. And we look at the, first of all, we have 10 schools in the fifth year, because each of the grants are in a different cycle. So, we took a look at those, uh, 10 schools, because they typically have a higher academic need. They have high academic needs. So, we went to those, uh, 10 principals, and we consulted with each of them to see if, um, they were interested in pursuing, uh, the grant. We looked at the grant formula, the implementation for success and the capacity that's needed, so that when the district puts out, um, our application, it's a district-level application, we want to have the most successful, um, application, uh, as we can. So, um, we, um, went ahead and reviewed all of that, and then we narrowed it to those 10, um, and then consulted with each of those, uh, 10 in the fifth year, so they would have a chance to reapply. And then we landed on the five principals that went ahead and, um, did their own assessment. We also take a look at the, uh, priority points that are required, which have to do with free and reduced lunch rates and, um, TSI, if they're targeted, um, targeted, um, for support and improvement sites in our district, and then also the letter grades. So, we take a look at a lot of things to make sure when we put the grant application out, we have the most, uh, the schools with the highest need who can get, you know, so we can be successful in writing the applications for the district.
Okay. I appreciate that. I just thought it was important, because we do have 32 schools and only five schools are getting this. I think it is important for the community to know the process by which those, um, are selected. So, I appreciate you outlining that for me, and that's all I had.
Thank you.
Do you wish to make a motion?
Uh, yes. If there's no other discussion, then I would make a motion to approve item E, um, and as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it. Lindsay Peterson.
Thank you, Lindsay. Is there any discussion? Here we none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. Thank you. Let's move on to consent agenda item aye. And Ms. Whaley, you're up again.
Pres, President Adams, I believe we only pulled D and E. I was accepted as consent.
Correct.
Oh, that was because I couldn't see it, and you were telling me there was an aye. Sorry.
Yes.
So, it's been approved, so then we may, nice job, Nikki. So, then we'll go ahead and we'll move forward to, uh, agenda item number four, which is going to be 4A. Am I correct, everybody?
Yes.
You know, it's comprehensive needs, um, assessment, CNA overview. Every-
Mr. Adams, members of the board, members of the audience, uh, Dr. Bailey will be presenting an overview of our comprehensive needs assessment. Dr. Bailey?
Thank you, um, Dr. Stanton, um, Mr. Adams, President Adams, members of the board, and those, um, listening and participating tonight. So, I have my, um, uh, help with, um, Shannon, that's going to, um, actually, um, help me with the PowerPoint, because I have no way to actually, um, advance it. So, um, thank you, Shannon. So, basically, what, what I'm going to present on is something, what is called the comprehensive needs assessment. And a lot of times, you'll hear the vernacular CNA. So, what is the comprehensive needs assessment? It basically is a, the foundation for our continuous improvement plan. And it is, um, something that all 32 schools are actually, um, working through at this point. It is actually a detailed rubric, um, and systematic set of procedures, um, that, um, our, um, schools are, all 32 schools are experiencing right now. It provides the school with the means to complete, uh, the analysis of their, um, school, looking at multiple sources of data and looking at multiple indicators. So, it really gives them a comprehensive needs assessment of what their school is, um, actually experiencing at the, at that point. And I really liked the quote where it says, "When a school is continuously improving", because that's really what we're looking at for school improvement, "a variety of changes occur in ways that can, can affect multiple dimensions of a system." And so let me tell you a little bit about the multiple dimensions of the system. We're really looking at six principles of continuous improvement, and that's part of this CNA, this comprehensive needs assessment. It really is based on what makes an effective school. And it actually comes from research, and one of the gurus in our field is a person named Larry Lazard. And so it's like, he's like a guru in, in, um, in, um, school improvement. And basically, it says that schools, um, are effective when they have leadership, when they have effective, uh, teachers and instruction, when there is an organization of time, like scheduling, that is task-oriented, when they have an effective curriculum that's based on standards, when that there is a, um, productive and positive climate and culture, as well as there's really effective family and community engagement. So, basically, um, the schools, um, use their CNA results, um, to identify the elements of their continuous improvement plan. So, they go through this, this process and, and, um, it's a rubric process. And they actually come up with what are their primary needs of, for improvement? What is, what is it that they're really going to prioritize? Once they look at prioritizing, um, certain areas, and we're really looking at, um, for them to develop, um, plans in, in three areas, um, then they're going to look at what's the root cause? Why is this a need? Is this a need because they need more resources, or they need a more training or professional development? There's so, there's, um, a wide range of reasons why. Then they actually, um, then look at that, um, that need and that need for improvement, and they actually come up with a goal. What is it as a school we want to, um, actually achieve in order to, um, um, deal with that need? And then, after they have that, then they come with strategies and action steps to actually, um, come up with a, um, a goal-oriented type of area. So, ADE, this is, um, the, um, about the fourth year that we've actually been using the comprehensive needs assessment. This year, um, um, ADE made quite a few changes in their, um, in the CNA, in the comprehensive needs assessment. And they've updated their, um, the, this assessment to really reflect their vision, where it is a emphasis on equity for all students to achieve their potential. So, this is an intentional focus on equity, um, um, that is coming out of, um, Arizona Department of Ed. In addition, there's also changes in, um, looking at culturally relevant practices within the schools, as well as social and emotional learning. And, um, um, we did provide you with, um, the actual rubric that is actually 80 pages. And, and I didn't want you to, needless to say, have to, to go through all those 80 pages, but I wanted you to see the scope of what the schools are actually, um, actually utilizing when they assess their school. Um, also, I'd like to go really into what the, um, what the ADE is actually defining as educational equity. It's saying that educational equity means that every student has access to the right resource they need at the right moment in their education, despite race, gender, sexual orientation, ethnicity, language, national, nationality slash immigration status, disability, family background, family income, or zip code. So, it's a, it's a fairly comprehensive, um, definition. Some examples, um, um, I just wanted to list a few examples, um, um, that are part of the assessment. For example, um, the principle two, which actually deals with teachers and instruction. One of the indicators that, um, the schools are, are to assess themselves are, is are professional, are there professional learning opportunities offered in our school built on for social, emotional learning, trauma-sensitive and culturally relevant, um, um, practices? So, each school would assess themselves on that. Another one, um, and just so that you know, then when I, when I'm talking of rubric, what they're facing, they, they look at that, and then they, um, actually state where they are on the rubric, and it can go from zero to three. For instance, if a school would, would indicate that they were at a zero status, that would mean that the professional learning opportunities for staff on these topics do not exist in the school. All the way to a school saying, but, um, actually reading themselves three, saying the professional learning opportunities for staff on these topics are consistently embedded, buried and aligned as needed and differentiated in our school. So, there's a real whole scope of where they're looking at. So, I gave you some other examples. Um, um, the next one is on, on time and scheduling. And then, um, I gave you an example, um, indicator, principle five deals with climate and culture. Do teachers use inclusive, relationship-centered and culturally responsive practices to create support- to create supportive classroom environments? Again, this is what a school assesses themselves on, using evidence to indicate whether they are at a, what level they're at. So the next, if we are to look at the whole scope of the process, basically the steps in the process are in January, and that's where we are now. Seems like longer than that, but January. Each school is actually completing the principals, all of the principals. They're assessing themselves on Principles One through Six. Then they're coming up with that root cause that I talked a little bit about. Why, why is that a need and how can we delve into it and coming up with that primary need? And then by February, they are to complete their school improvement plan, otherwise known as school improvement plan, the continuous improvement plan, and what we in our school district call their 90-day plans. And really that's their guide as they go throughout the school year on how they're really working to be the most effective school that they can. Who is, who's actually involved in this? I mean, who's actually involved in actually working through and assessing the schools? Well, principals and assistant principals, needless to say, and as well as leadership teams, site councils, as well as classified and certified staff. And if you saw the scope of the, the amount of indicators, you would see that, that they really had to divide. Most schools are dividing up to certain teams to zero in on certain principles. And then they're getting, gathering together and coming up with some consensus decision. The district office is also very involved, administrative services with the superintendent's department. That includes our admin coaches that are directly involved in, in working with our individual schools. Academic Services is very involved, as well as the Assessment Department, which they're, they're actually providing quite a bit of data for our schools. Curriculum Instruction is extremely involved in what curricular types of materials that are available, as well as our Federal Branch Department that has done a lot with actually working through this whole process. And after a school is actually finished with their, their CNA, they actually have to actually provide that, the CNA to ADE. So it is something that ADE is actually requesting and looking at. And it actually provides a foundation for our school improvement plans. Some key talking points I just wanted to reiterate. All schools, all 32 schools are completing their CNA during this month of January. Just says their progress on those six principles that I talked about. Schools use those CNA results as a foundation for their continuous improvement plan, which we call our 90-day plans. And then ADE has definitely updated their CNA to reflect equity, culturally relevant practices, as well as social and emotional learning. Thank you, Ms. Tucker. Did a great job keeping up with me, I appreciate it. I am certainly open to questions.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. Another great job, very informative. Board members, any questions? Okay, hearing none. Dr. Bailey? Hello?
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Adams, this is Jenny Abbott Bearty. I have a quick question, Dr. Bailey. The 90-day plan that's done at the end of the year, that's for the following year or?
Good, good point, because the 90-day plan that they're doing, that they'll finish by actually February 19th, they will continue that on through the end of this year. And then that will continue in for the fall semester.
Okay.
But at the end of this year, they actually look at their progress. And the reason why we call it 90 days is that it's such a flexible document that we really look at one semester at a time. ADE came out a little bit later with, with the CNA because of some revisions and so forth like that. So next year, we probably will be a little bit ahead. We'll be giving the CNA probably in December. And so in other words, that we can actually have that, that 90-day plan for the second semester and then going into the first semester. But great question, I appreciate that.
Thank you. And then a follow-up, but maybe a little different, is what does ADE do with this information? Let's say somebody falls below, just for the whole state, I'm just curious. If somebody falls below in the rubric score? What does that mean?
They, it wouldn't be necessarily that, that they would fall below. But it would be that if you're not looking at some of your lowest scores, why are you not utilizing that as a priority? Okay, so when they, when each school looks at their, their rubric, they have to decide what priorities that they're going to look at. So we could get some questions from saying, you know, this was rated low, but yet you chose this other priority. Why did you do that? So there has to be some explanation on, in the process that why we chose that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And Ms. Whalley, I think you have something.
Yes, thank you. First of all, excellent presentation. You know how much I love the word equity. I know other people don't, but I am really happy with this rubric. I know that people over at ADE have worked really hard, not only creating this rubric, but also creating supports and resources for districts so that they can, you know, implement that should their CNA come up with certain things. So I really do appreciate the fact that we're using this new rubric. And I, I love that we are using that as the basis for our 90-day plans. I mean, to piggyback on what Ms. Abbott Bearty was saying, while they may not question us as much, it definitely as a board is something that we can look at when we look at the 90-day plans and we, and we see why they picked their 90-day plans compared to their CNAs. We will be able to ask those questions. There's oversight on that level, even if there's no maybe teeth or anything, you know, really severe at the, at the state level. So the question that I have though, you married, you mentioned Larry Ferlazzo and I, I love his work. But one of the things he talks about, he's got great work in terms of what's the difference between inclusion and engagement? And we're talking about parent engagement and a lot of these things. And then I'm looking at the people that are, are participating in this. And so my question is, where is? It's all self-assessment and it looks like principals and maybe some district staff will come in and look at what the principal looks like to make sure that everybody's on the same page. But where are we asking our students? Where are we asking our families? Because even in the best, you know, situations, we see where people feel like they're, you know, moving along or being more equitable or being culturally responsive. But then you ask the students themselves or you ask the families themselves whether or not they feel that, whether they perceive that, and it's a different answer. And so I'm wondering, when we're doing these 90-day plans, especially when we're talking about cultural responsiveness, especially when we're talking about parent engagement, where is the built-in piece of these plans where staff and family are part of that discussion? Because you mentioned site councils, but I know that there's only two representative, two parent representatives on those councils.
Yeah, some of it, Ms. Whalley, members of the board, some of the schools are involving parent-teacher organizations. Okay, so, so there's a little bit more of a variety there. But we've had parent surveys before, unfortunately, due to the, I don't want to say everything's due to the COVID, but pandemic, we did not have a parent survey last year that went out. But we're looking at revising our parent survey. And I know it won't reflect this CNA, but we're looking at revising the parent survey that it would look at some of these areas and getting some input from parents on those areas. And especially with, with the definitions that, that have been provided for us by our, by ADE. So.
Because that's my concern is if, if, if the school is trying to self-assess on how well they're engaging families and how well they're being culturally responsive, are they really the ones to self-assess that, right? Shouldn't the end users, the person, you know, who you're trying to be inclusive to be the predictor or the judge in terms of how well that's happening? And so that's my concern there is if we are not adding in those student and those family surveys that specifically line up to these things, we're only going off of self-report. Which kind of leads me to my second one, is what kind of professional development is happening in terms of awareness? I mean, there's a lot of new stuff in here in terms of trauma and, and cultural responsiveness and bias. What kind of professional development is happening throughout the district to prepare teachers, staff, principals, administrators to understand their bias, to understand trauma? What kind of professional development is so that they can even appropriately assess how they're doing on it?
I believe that, and probably Ms. Mora could talk a little bit more about that, but she is working with a group that is preparing some professional development on that. Our social workers have also done quite a bit with trauma and working in the schools with trauma. Every single one of the social workers have, have provided some professional development on trauma. Also some self-care that they're doing right now.
Okay, yeah, I would like to hear from Ms. Mora. And I mean, I'll, I'll turn it over to the next person, but I would like to hear from Ms. Mora either in a future report or if she can get ahold of me in terms of where we're embedding the professional development to appropriately use this tool. And yeah, so if I could get something back from them, that would be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other board members? Okay, Dr. Bailey, great job as always. And thank you for all you do and all your team does. With that, we'll go ahead and we will move on to the next agenda item. But before we do, which is going to be the COVID update, I want to take a moment to acknowledge that in action item B, we went and approved the retirement of Mrs. Kathy Thompson. And I think now would be a good time to reverse that and not allow her to retire and have her stick around. She's been so wonderful to us. She has protected us over the many, many, many years. She has 20 years of servicing. And to say that she has, boy, the many conversations I've had with her. I can go on and on and on and on, but I just want to take a moment for us to acknowledge Ms. Thompson for the wonderful job she has done. And again, I keep going back to protecting us. And that's exactly what she's done over the last 20 years. And what she's put into place will continue to protect us for the next 20. So Ms. Thompson, if you're listening, a big thank you from all of us. And with that, Dr. Stanton, I'll, I'll go ahead and move over to you for the COVID update.
And maybe, Ms. Thompson, you want to add any comments when we come to your part of the COVID update? So Mr. Adams.
She's going to be cinned it, right?
Mr. Adams, members of the board, members of the audience, as we have been doing now for quite a bit of time, almost a year now, I think, we've been providing a COVID update at each board meeting. We go around our dais, but we do it virtually. So Dr. Bailey, if you would begin a COVID update related to your departments.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you again, board members and members of the audience. I'm going to actually preface of three areas. One is something that we call our face-to-face transition meeting. And I'll tell you a little bit more about that. The second item is on summer school planning. And the third item is on kinder roundup. And thank you, Ms. Peterson, for a good transition into that. So what do I mean by face-to-face transition meeting? We have had a, we are starting meetings to actually transition back into a face-to-face model. And the reason why we're doing is that we want it to be the smoothest transition possible. So we're transferring from a virtual model to a face-to-face model. And so this is in the planning stages. This is what we're looking at for the planning stages. So that we're, during the first couple of meetings, what we've looked at is written types of procedures to transfer into a hybrid model. And then we're starting to, and also look at if we're to transfer to a face-to-face five-day model. So hybrid as well as a five-day face-to-face model. And so when I'm talking about departments, I'm talking about like transportation. What is, what would that look like? Nutrition services, curriculum instruction, scheduling. And these are all lessons learned when we moved from virtual to hybrid in the fall. And so we're actually writing those, those procedures down, some of the challenges that we had, some of the barriers that we had and how we're going to work through, again, to get to that smooth transition for our staff, for our students, for our families. And again, looking at both the hybrid and a traditional five-day type of model. So now we're progressing. Then we're bringing, our next couple of meetings, we're bringing our parent group that has been involved before, as well as our teachers, and having them give us input and feedback on those, that transition model. Again, from their standpoint, from their feedback and from their perspective, what are the best procedures to go into the next model? So that is what's called a transition face-to-face. So you may hear that somebody's saying that they're going to a transition face-to-face type of committee. And that's what we're looking at. The second area that I'm going to talk a little bit about is summer school planning. And we've had an introductory meeting on summer school planning. And looking at, and these are preliminary, but looking at what are some programming that would be, excuse me, we would be doing in June and July? And even thinking outside the box, okay? Thinking, do we need to provide in different places? Do we need to go into apartment complexes and to provide summer school planning? So we're really brainstorming on this, looking at offering five weeks of summer programming in June. And then what would that look like should we come back in July and work with some of our students then? Even with that time period, do we need to extend the days? That extended times during the day for summer school planning? We're also looking at, do we need to prepare for both virtual and in-person type of formats? So looking at that. Looking at providing services to all 32 of our schools, okay? How can we provide services that all 32 of our schools would, students would have the opportunity to actually be part of summer school? We're looking at academic, we're looking at social and emotional, we're looking at enrichment. We're also looking at what are programs that we would have for our gifted students? What are programs that we would have for our EL student? What are programs that we would have for our Native American students? Looking at all of the, the groups and making sure that we're meeting their needs. We know during this, this year that we've had that we really need to look at that on the summer school as a way of actually getting at some of the student learning that we need to reinforce, that the students need to master. So we're in the beginning stages, but I wanted you to know that, that we are really progressing on summer school planning. And as we progress more, I will be able to give you a little bit more information on that. And last but not least, and again, I appreciate Ms. Peterson talking about our kinder drive-through. I do have the reputation of actually identifying the coldest day of the year to actually provide the kinder roundup. So when I was going around to some of the schools, I did get a little bit of, a few comments about that. But it was, as, as was stated, it was a very, very successful type of program. And actually, we actually had 50 more parent, 50 more families than the previous year when we looked at district-wise. So it's very, very interesting. And I, I have to give a shout-out, first of all, to our creative kindergarten teachers. Whenever you give them some type of task, they, they're extremely creative. And I think some of you saw that when, when we talked about the checkpoints. They were very, very creative. I have to give a shout-out to our Cape department. They did an unbelievable job. They went to 73 apartment complexes to actually advertise for, for our kinder roundup. They did the Facebook Live that, that Dr. Stanton talked about. That was extremely successful. And each one of the schools did videos, extremely creative videos. And I just want to give you just comments because afterwards I asked schools to give us, to give us comments about the kinder roundup. So at Lookout Mountain, I thought it was very, very interesting. They, they stated, the weather was freezing out there. But it was so hard not to be able to hug the kiddos and show them the campus and perp. and show them the campus in person." Then, from Xiaobu, I just want to state this. Xiaobu said, "We have five times over the amount of families than in previous years. Our kinder teachers did an amazing job greeting every student with warmth and enthusiasm and answering parent questions with confidence. Parents drove away visibly more relaxed and smiling about their students coming to kindergarten. Future kindergarten students will receive, they received a school supply kit, a whiteboard, a pencil pouch, and a book." And the parents were even asking us how we were doing in this pandemic. So, I just wanted to give you a few comments. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to actually talk about it. I'm really proud of what the kinder roundup actually did this week, and thank goodness I didn't say on Monday because it was snowing and raining that day. So, just a little bit of cold. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Adams, members of the board, members of the audience, Mr. Adams, I know you're usually the five-minute summary, so Dr. Bailey was very excited, though, however, so I appreciate that. But over to Mr. Wing, who's normally on the other side of the dais. Mr. Wing, would you please give an update for what's happening in the HR related to COVID-19? Thank you.
Sure. Sorry, sure. Good evening, governing board, Dr. Stanton, and the audience. Just a few updates. We've been providing continuous communication to all of our staff regarding vaccines and really wanting to make sure all of our employees have an opportunity to seek.
Getting vaccinated? Sorry.
Okay. Most of the communication has been related to the open pod, as you're aware, in the state of Arizona, K-12 employees, including governing board members, were eligible for that Phase 1B population to be vaccinated a couple of weeks ago and continuing on. Feedback from a lot of employees, it buried, a lot of employees were able to secure a schedule and have received their first dose. Some have struggled because, as you may be aware, the dates and times quickly, opportunities quickly diminished, and then people are just checking daily to see if they randomly add more dates and times, which has been the case. I do want to thank Glendale Union. We have been seeking a closed pod specific for WESD employees to have access to obtain the vaccination, along with Glendale Union, Glendale Elementary, and other school systems in our boundaries. Glendale Union really facilitated it. Part of the reason is Maricopa County was targeting high schools as they have larger gyms to hold the vaccinations, but I appreciate their work. We have communicated to staff, let them know that we've secured one. We still don't have dates and times yet, but once we get that confirmed, we're going to notify staff, along with how to sign up for it if you have not already. Again, we want every employee to have an opportunity, so we will be likely asking employees to fill out a form, informing us whether or not they have already obtained the vaccination. Part of that form is going to lead them or remind, remind us that if we got the Pfizer vaccine, we cannot access that in the closed pod. We still need to schedule or keep our schedule for the open pod, things like that. But from what we're being informed, there'll be about 7,000 vaccinations to be given, and that's enough for all of our employees in all of the districts and boundary schools, maybe even a little more because some have already received the vaccination. We are, HR is involved in the transition back committee, and so not just communication plan for students, families that we're working on, but also staff and their potential return in the future. You know, even though students are at home right now in the virtual setting, we still are managing our COVID cases that have been coming in, and you probably are aware it is mandatory that we notify the Maricopa County Public Health, and so we still get those in daily, and then we follow our wall-to-wall cleaning procedures if that were the case. We're still working on staffing projections for next year. I shared last meeting, it is complicated, trying to project student enrollments when we've had a decrease and a significant one, and many of which was due to COVID. So, I appreciate Dr. Bailey and the Washington District Team and school teams for the kindergarten roundup that helps lead us one direction in projecting staffing for next year, at least particularly for kindergarten. And just because we're dealing with the pandemic, our day-to-day operations does not halt. We are interviewing. Thank you, Dr. Stanton. Ms. Lydia Garcia, our teacher recruiter, has really been facilitating the teacher fairs that we do on a monthly basis. Past couple of months, it's been a virtual fair versus live, and we have begun posting and interviewing for leadership positions as well. Thank you.
Mr. Adams, members of the board, members of the audience, Ms. Kathy Thompson, actually, sorry, Mrs. Mora, and then Ms. Thompson will conclude with you. Ms. Thompson, if you would please give an update related to COVID-19 and academic services.
Thank you, President Adams, governing board members, and community. As you've been hearing, we are looking forward to transitioning and getting our students back in the doors so that we can teach them in person, and we are closely monitoring those metrics. But we are at that point where we are getting ready to ask families to make a commitment to us as to which learning environment they would like to continue in. We are, you know, we know that the timing of this is extremely important, but this does allow us to have ample time to properly plan for our classrooms so that we will know how many students are, will be coming back through the doors, and then how many will be remaining online. So, as we progress and we get closer to the positivity rate of the metrics, and Dr. Stanton will be talking about this a little bit further, when it's moving towards that 10% positivity rate, then we will be asking our families to respond and make a decision for us with that commitment. We'll be leaving that open for about a week so that we can get all that information in, and then that will allow our schools to also follow up with families that may not be able to access. The emails that they receive, we'll be advertising that extensively through our CAPE team, our social media, but we will ask that response time come in, and then that will allow us to reach out and get those responses from families that we have not heard from. And we will be working with our schools to support and assist in making those most important contacts with families so we can understand and have a clear picture of who will be joining us in person, and then who will also want to maintain that option of staying online. At this time, we also have, we're continuing to assess our students, and right now, the window is open for our middle-of-the-year assessments. This provides us incredibly important data, and even though it's very challenging in the online environment to have our students complete those assessments, we know it's extremely important for us to know what the next steps are in providing intervention, what we will need to do to support our students more fully when we do get them back in person, and how we can plan accordingly for what needs to be put in place to support. And so, we want, you know, we want to thank our teachers. We know that it's a challenge to get all of our students assessed during this time, but they've been doing an amazing job of reaching out and making sure that our students are engaged in that process. And so, we look forward to getting those results in and really doing some good analysis with that. I keep reporting this, as of this time, AZ Merit will be administered, and unless there's a decision made at the state level, we will be planning for that. This is an online assessment, however, it does need to be in person. So, once we get back and we have our transition plan, we'll have a better idea of what that will entail and look like. But we do, at this time, anticipate that we will be providing that assessment. Also, our teacher teams that have been working on creating lessons for us have continued to do so. We have amazing teachers who have devoted much time and their expertise to building and designing these lessons, and just as we've done for the first three quarters, we will have a set of lessons for the fourth quarter. And once again, they've identified those essential standards that we're working on. These lessons will be available to be taught either online or in person, so our students in both learning platforms will get the quality education that we've been very proud of offering. And once again, it's been through the efforts of our teachers, our administration, our parents, and our students that we have had such tremendous success with our engaging in lessons online. So, we do appreciate everybody's work with that. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Mr. Adams, members of the board, members of the audience, Ms. Thompson, if you would please update us in regards to business services and COVID-19, of course, Mr. Adams mentioned your retirement, and anything you want to say there? Kathy, you okay? We got your microphone on?
Ms. Thompson, did she already retire?
Kathy, you there? Did we lose you? Mr. Adams, I may, I may step in, although Ms. Fernandez, if you could try to get ahold of Ms. Thompson and make sure everything's good there. Oh, her computer just locked up. I have a text that says her computer locked up, so, Ms. Adams, we'll just give it one, about 30 seconds, if that's okay?
Please.
And then, and then, otherwise, I can come in, but I just want to see if Kathy can get back on. So, we'll give it a moment here. She said she's getting back on, Mr. Adams, so give it a moment. And thank you for the audience for your patience. Sometimes we have a couple of technical glitches. We appreciate your patience. Let's see if she gets back on, otherwise, Mr. Adams, I will start to go, and then as soon as she's back on, we can transition, okay?
Thank you.
Ms. Tucker, if you'll let us know when she's on, I can begin mine as well, or Ms. Fernandez, if you could. So, Mr. Adams, obviously, we're missing, Mr. Adams, members of the board, members of the audience, obviously, we're missing Ms. Thompson's update, and as soon as we have it, we'll certainly get her in. But I did want to bring up at the close, you heard this evening about Lynn talking about our preparation for, planning ahead for our, oops, she's in, Mr. Adams, so I'm going to switch over if I may. Is that okay?
Thank you.
Ms. Thompson, I see you're back, so if you want to go ahead and give your update, we'd love to hear from you.
Well, I'm on for now, anyway. Mr. Adams, before I start into my update, I want to thank you for the nice comments. I'm glad that what I've been able to do the last 20 years has been effective and helped the district out. I appreciate the support everybody's given me. Looking, and to, looking, trying to get back to school in the next couple of months, hopefully with the children, we do, I just wanted you to be aware of the fact that we do have PPE in stock. We, we were able to stock up back at the beginning of the school year, thinking we would be going back in person quickly and stay in person for a while. So, we did have our stock in the warehouse completely updated. We also got a lot of donations from the city of Phoenix, Maricopa County, so we think that we are pretty well-stocked for students to come back when the decision is made to do that. The one thing that is affecting us, and it is, the whole COVID situation is affecting us, is our student enrollment is down. It's still down. We had 100th day of the year this, this week, so I don't see, foresee the numbers improving for our budget, for the final budget this year. We're still down about 2,100 students. However, the average daily membership for those students is only down about 1,700, so that's a little bit less of an impact to our budget. As you know, we have been in distance learning for quite a bit this year. Per the governor's executive order, he, he will pay, reimburse districts for 95% of the FTE of a student for that distance learning. That could impact our budget further. We have been working with legislators and things like that to try to get them to fund it at 1.0, and that is looking a little bit more positive, but it's not final. That would help us if that, if that ended up happening. So, right now, the reduction because of the distance learning is about almost $6 million to our budget further. Luckily, we received the Enrollment Stabilization Grant, and we were able, that was able to cover for us that initial reduction to our budget for loss of students. So, that's been done. We've journal interviewed, we spent all the money, and we've, we've helped out our 1.0 budget. That was about $9.7 million. We also have about $5 million left of our original ESAR grant, and if they continue on with that reduction, it will, we can help our current year budget with that. The new stimulus that was approved by the federal government just recently is actually going to be a grant that will help us as we move into trying to figure out what we need to do and, you know, teachers and physicians and things we might need to help make sure that our students are where they need to be next year. We will be able to afford that, a lot of that based upon the new ESAR grant. It could be up to three or four times what we got from the original grant, so it could help us out with our budget. If we do not get all of our students back next year, and our budget will be a little bit lower, this grant will help us. It could be as much as $28 million. So, it has the ability to help us over the next couple of years. We don't have those final allocations on that. We just have a guideline that we can follow to kind of give us an idea about what that is. So, that, that is a plus. That's a real plus because it takes a little bit of the worry out of what we have to do with all the unknowns we have out there.
Thank you, Kathy. Mr. Adams, members of the board, members of the audience, I'll conclude our COVID-19 update as I've been doing now for a number of months. A couple of things, many of you are familiar with our green, yellow, and red in the sense of traditional hybrid and substantial or virtual. You can still see that there are strategies that ADHS has had school districts follow when they're in the face-to-face, we call it the hybrid and the virtual. We continue to focus on the metrics as they've been a very good guide to us. I know there's been some new information coming out, but you'll see, and Ms. Tucker, if you'll slip, switch to the next page, please. So, the current week, you can see that our cases per 100,000, that the overall risk level is substantial. The recommendation is virtual with onsite support, that the cases per 100,000 are down. We are down from 810 roughly to about 686, but the percent positivity moved a little bit, but not as much as, I guess, anticipated, and Maricopa County recognized that on their webinar today. And the COVID-like illness moved from 13.7 to about 12.5%. So, just want to be aware that there is some slight downward motion, but it's not as much, I suppose, as we've seen in other times. Maricopa County did recognize that they do believe that we will see these numbers start to begin to drop the next week or so. They use a seven-day average, and they did mention today in their webinar that they're going to be looking at that. And of course, if it goes down, that usually is a predictor. As everybody recalls, these numbers are about two weeks behind. So, I do want to, I do want to point out that Lynn talked about looking for, our teams are planning for both hybrid and face-to-face depending on where we are. You did hear Justin talk about the, we now have the chance for our staff to have the opportunity to receive the Moderna vaccine, most likely on the February, I think, February 13th and 14th, their first vaccination, and we're still working out with Glendale Union and Price Pharmacy when we would do the second vaccination. You did talk, Lori did talk about the work that we're doing to be prepared for both scenarios with our lessons and our planning. Kathy mentioned, obviously, financially where we're at, and then, but actually what we're able to use federal dollars and other dollars as well. And there is some bills going through that maybe will take care of the distance learning as she mentioned. So, this is always the hardest part because we do receive emails and calls. So, first, I want to say that our team is prepared for, you know, whatever we are able to face in the future. That's what we've been working on, that's what we continue to work on. We, every Friday, try to communicate to our, our families what's happening and what's going on. It is so tough to predict the future. That's the part that's most difficult. So, what I do want to say is that we are continuing to follow the metrics, but they do seem to be going down. It's not as rapid as we would like, but it is at least going down, and Maricopa County is predicting, based on their seven-day average, that we may see it go down in the future. Our staff is going to have the opportunity to have vaccinations, two doses of the Moderna virus in our closed pod, and we're so thankful for the Maricopa County for giving us that opportunity in February. The second one, again, yet to be determined. We don't have that date yet. As soon as we have it, we'll share that out, of course. So, I don't have an exact date, but I will say- So, I don't have an exact date, but I will say that we are looking ahead, that if you looked at our numbers to go down, and we were able to hit the metrics, spring break is the number we're going to watch closely as a district to see if we can come back in person, whether that's hybrid or face-to-face. It's going to depend on the factors that have already been mentioned. But again, I cannot commit to any dates, and I know the districts that have, I noticed many districts say it's an aspirational situation, but if we could, and the numbers continue down, the metrics move, and then we could get vaccine opportunities, at least for our staff, we'll be looking at that timeframe. And Ms. Whaley, I'd like to thank you for your compliment earlier, that we are providing a great, excellent education in the online world. We are supporting our students academically and socially, emotionally in that environment. And I want to thank everybody for the hard work on that. Our class sizes are very reasonable compared to what others are doing, and we have live teachers the majority of the time. So, again, I don't want to make a commitment that's so hard to do, but if we stayed on the trajectory of the numbers going down, and we're able to get, you know, two vaccines into our staff, by the way, I did say staff. I want to say that's also certified, classified, admin, everybody, they would be able to have those. Then the spring break areas where we see, now if the numbers move sooner, all that stuff, we'll look closely. But right now, looking ahead, I would say that we would, you know, we could look at in-person work coming after spring break. But again, the metrics have to show the numbers, and we have to have vaccination opportunities. And now my team, as always, is ready to take questions from the board. Thank you.
Board, any questions?
I had a question. This is Lindsay Peterson. Yeah, I actually had a couple of questions for Mr. Wing. So I'm very encouraged by the vaccine movement and grateful for the opportunity within the district to get those vaccines for our teachers. So you did say that we have 7,000 vaccines available. Is that for the whole pod, then, so for everybody that qualifies it within our boundaries?
Yeah, I think they obtained, I know they obtained the total employee counts per each one of the three districts, and it was a little less than 7,000, so you round up to 7,000 in case there's other school systems within our boundaries. So the answer is yes. Now, it doesn't, it's not going to be applicable to those who got the first dose of Pfizer through the open pods. So, you know, I'm going to assume there's going to be potentially extras, assuming they come with the full count of 7,000.
And then, do we have any idea the number of our teachers that have, or staff in general, who have already obtained their vaccine elsewhere?
We do not. We're going to be, I'm looking to that form that we're going to provide, asking those who have taken the first dose versus those who need that closed pod, just in case there's changes in the number of doses available, to make sure that we do whatever we can to make sure all of those who did not get the Pfizer first dose, that they have an opportunity to get one in the second. So, I'll know more after that's turned in and engaged those who have done it versus those who still need that opportunity.
Okay, thank you. And then just one other question, I know, you know, and you well know, we've talked about it before, for many years I've talked to you about this, Mr. Wing, the extreme teacher shortage in Arizona. So how do our colleges of education look this year, and how are we, you know, where are we recruiting from?
I mean, honestly, I kind of feel like a broken record. There's been no significant changes. It's pretty status quo, and unfortunately, a status quo doesn't mean a good thing in this case. So, there's still a teacher shortage. You know, I would love and hope that we can get significant increases into the College of Education, but it's not happening yet. Which makes it challenging during this COVID environment. Any environment, but particularly this time.
Thank you.
Is that it? Okay, Ms. Whaley.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Yeah, I'm really excited that we're offering that closed pod. I know a good amount of folks got into the one over at the stadium before that. So I think that team, your team, the districts for working together for that, I think that's really going to be helpful for a lot of our teachers, especially since, you know, it's hard to do that when you're working. You have to be in front of a computer Monday through Friday, so having that extra closer would be great. I have a couple of questions. The first one, in terms of the ESER, or I think it's what, ESER grant, the additional federal dollars that will be coming in. That's to cover, I just wanted to make sure I understood, Ms. Thompson, what that would be potentially covering. It would cover the cost of teachers where there might have been shortfall in enrollment? And then what else would it cover? Would it cover additional resources to maybe address any gaps or drops in education that might have happened during COVID?
Yeah, it will be able to cover, like, if we needed to, if we needed to keep, have extra teachers, if we needed to have extra classes given, if we needed to buy additional curriculum and things like that, or, you know, that we don't have right now, that we might need to help for special circumstances and things like that. The grant also allows for an opportunity to help us with our other budget, too. It actually helps us to, it says continuity of operations. So if there were things where we were required to make cuts in our budget again, or even this year, it would help, we can also pay for things like that with the grant. Our, the main approach we're trying to take right now is how would we approach, you know, classrooms next year, how would we approach summer work, after-school work, things like that? It would allow us to pay additional stipends or teacher salaries, things like that.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that, because I know we've worked really hard each year with IBN to try to make sure that we maintain, that's one of our priorities, is maintaining classroom size or reducing customer size, making sure that we're still offering those stipends for additional services. So I'm glad that that looks like it will be coming to fruition for us. The other question I have is about assessments, so probably Ms. Mora. I assume that we'll get an update once you get the new spring assessment, so that we can see what impact COVID has had on those cohorts between last year and this year?
Yes, we can provide that.
Okay, and when might that be available?
Double check on the testing window. We are testing throughout this month to get all the ELA math and everything together. So I would say we could have that early February.
Okay.
Or middle of February.
Okay, so then, and that would allow us to compare this beginning part of this semester to this time last year?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, and then the last bit is, it sounds like from what Dr. Stanton just said, that we're going to continue to watch the metrics. Even though we have vaccine available, we're not going to be bringing people to full traditional as long as the metrics are still at this 20-something percent?
Well, so, Ms. Whaley, members of the board, members of the audience, yeah, we are at 24. Actually, Maricopa County is about 24 as well, so we are still following the metrics. And then you did mention the vaccination. We would like to have, for any consideration of that type of work, we would want to have the vaccinations in our staff. So, yes, metrics, and then yes, vaccinations. And again, we're working still to find out our second date. We have the first date set up. We don't have the second date set up yet, so.
Okay, so that means that if we're still above 10%, then we will not be going back to an in-person model, at least as we know right now?
I would say, at least as we know right now, one thing we would be looking at is what's the trajectory, as you know, Ms. Whaley, because that's always been the $64,000 question, using the old game show term. You know, the idea is, how do you know where we're going? And that's where parents have always asked us, can you tell me? So, with, before winter break, I made the aspirational statement, and, you know, we ended up in that point. If we're still going down, then we'd start looking at where are we, you know, where are we at the metrics? So as we get closer to the metrics coming within that range, as you mentioned, the 10%, that's when we're going to start to survey, as you heard Ms. Mora say, and then we have to start to predict a trajectory. The vaccine, I will say, the vaccine that we're hearing is, does make, you know, that will be, you can't say perfect safety, but at least 95% that you've heard about, that would then make it where, I think, for our staff at least, they would definitely feel much better in the situations, having the two vaccines in them.
Thank you, yeah, because I know that there has been stuff coming out from the CDC about, you know, how much transmittal actually happens on campus, but I think important pieces that we, that all of those reports are saying, there's a big if in there, and it's if community spread is not also extremely high. So, you know, it's not likely that you'll get them on campuses so long as community spread is not super high. And so I think that's just really important for us, why we must still watch the metrics. And I think that some of the reporting that's come out, that headlines that say one thing, and then when you actually read the whole article, there's a lot of ifs and caveats in that. And so I appreciate that we're still committed to the metrics until we hear something else, that there's different metrics that are safe in terms of the contagion level in our communities. So I appreciate, I appreciate that. The last bit is AZ merit. If the AZ merit must be done in person, I'm just curious as to how that would happen if we are above 10% and then they say we must do AZ merit. I guess we're going to have to look for some direction from the state on that when that comes around.
Well, I will turn over to Ms. Mora, but I will say, Ms. Whaley, that they're already starting to plan, because we have been hearing that, you know, even though they'll be taking it on, you know, using their, say, Chromebook, they would be at school, we would have to look at those mitigation strategies, so we're already working on that, because, and I know, Ms. Mora, I think you mentioned earlier, they've extended the window. Obviously, part of the extension of the window is so you have less people on campus at the same time.
Maybe like a rotation or fewer.
Yeah, I don't, I apologize, Ms. Whaley, I didn't mean to step in on you there. I think Ms. Mora's, I know Ms. Mora's team's working on it. I don't think we have all the logistics worked out. But Lori, if you want to add to any of that, I don't think they've actually got that schedule scheduled down. We just know the range right now, but they're working on it. But go ahead, Lori.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Whaley. The Department of Education has extended that window considerably. So we have a longer, longer period of time. Obviously, if we're not in person, we are going to have to figure out, you know, how would we rotate students in safely to get them to complete that assessment? Because it cannot be done at home, you know, clearly, it's for, you know, fidelity of the testing environment. But we will have to work through some logistics with that, or, you know, or possibly get some additional guidance from ADE as well.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you for all you guys are doing.
Thank you. Jenny, Larry, you have anything?
No, I'm good, thank you. Just absorbing everything.
Thank you. Larry?
Yeah, I was, I got my question answered, though. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, a couple of things. One is, you know, I'm listening to this, and Jenny, I'm doing the same thing you're doing. I'm absorbing it all also. And we know that we have other districts that are in person, and we get questions about this. And I think, and Dr. Stanton, you actually mentioned it. You know, everybody's sort of looking for that date. We want a date. When are we going to do this? There's a lot of frustration out there, and I think people are just looking for hope. And from what I'm looking at, and I would never ask, you know, if you can solidify and give us a date, but in theory, we're 60 days out. And the variables are going to be, the numbers coming down. This board, this district, this administration, and everybody, it's always been about the safety of our children and our staff. And I believe that we still stand by that. And the variables that we have is the vaccinations, as they're being administered and they're being offered. But even if, as you look at that, we've had some of our staff be able to go down to the stadium and get their shots. Some have had some very difficult times. And now that the pods are being created, thank you, team, and thank you, Glendale Union, for all your help. It's so encouraging, so that will be, you know, even if you look at that in the two weeks prior, if we're going to do that around the 15th, you're still looking at the end of the month before anybody's able to get that second shot. So logistically, even if you were to say, hey, we're going to luck out here, those numbers are going to go down, and we get everybody vaccinated, it's still going to be 60 days out. I think I'm most proud of our parents, obviously, you know, what our staff is doing is phenomenal, but the emails that we receive, even if we're not on the same page or different positions, they're very professionally written, they're, you know, they state their position without attacking. And from that aspect, I got to say thank you to the community for communicating with us. We do listen to all of you. We do understand your frustrations. And again, our intent is to get those children back in their classes and to make sure it's safe for those students and our staff. And again, the board, we're going to stick by our plan unless something should change in the next couple of weeks. Dr. Stanton, am I on track with this in regards to looking at the crystal ball?
Mr. Adams, members of the board, members of the audience, so your 60-day number, Mr. Adams, I'd have to sit with you, maybe after the meeting, we can go over that. But the idea is being, from where we are in spring break, you may have that correct. I didn't look, you know, I didn't count out the days because I'm participating.
I counted the spring break in there. It'd be after the spring break.
Understood, okay.
It's more than 60 days. It's 64 days.
Okay, again, I've been participating. I wasn't counting the calendar, forgive me. But, I mean, the idea is that you said we're looking at the metrics. And then the vaccine, we've got our first dosage set up. We need to hear from Glendale Union and Fries so that win that second one. The metrics, again, right now, they went down a little bit, but according to Maricopa, they believe they'll start to go down based on their seven-day average. We'll start to see that to move downward. So the key will be at what trajectory, Mr. Adams. And then, you know, as I said, our aspirational goal would be after spring break, some form, you know, in person. Let's see as those metrics move, and then we can keep having this update each, you know, every Friday, like we do with the staff and our parents. We can update them, so we can say, hey, it's moving in this direction. Let's get prepared. It's moving in this direction. Let's get this prepared. We did that on our way when the numbers were going up, and we'll do the same thing when it's moving down. Assuming that it stays in that direction.
And thank you. I think that's a, I believe that's a very clear picture to the community and the staff and everybody. So I thank you for that. If no one else has any other, any other comments, we will go ahead and move on. Thank you, everybody, for your reports. Ms. Thompson, I'll give you one last chance to rescind that tournament, and I'll wait. Really? Okay, so we're going to move on now to request for, request for future agenda items, or reports for agenda items. Anybody have anything they'd like to add, a request?
Mr. Adams, thank you, Whaley.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like a future report on the professional development being offered to staff around the CNA.
Thank you. Any other board members? Okay, so hearing none, we're going to go ahead and move into executive session. And Shannon, do I need a motion for that, or do we just gabble and move on?
We do need a motion.
Okay, may I please have a motion to recess? Thank you, Mr. Herrera. Now have a second, please.
I second. Jenny Abbott, sorry.
Jenny, thank you. I'm sorry, you're right there, sorry. Thank you so much. I do see you. Thank you so much. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. And thank you, team, for joining us, and we'll see most of you upstairs, I would assume. Let's take a five, we have to, you know, just a reminder, we have to log out here, and then we'll log into the executive session. Let's take a five-minute break, though, if that's okay with everybody. And we'll see in five on the backside.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Thank you.
Hi everybody. Is Larry here? Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and reconvene our governing board meeting at 10:29. And with that, I'm going to go ask for a motion for adjournment please.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Welling. May I have a second? Thank you so much. And with that all in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Goodnight everybody and thank you very, very, very much.
Goodnight, thank you.
See ya.